Would you like to read all this meeting order? I would allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregapped, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everyone had a chance to read the minutes, so first by legislator Lockwood, second by legislator Twist. Any questions? There you go. All those in favor? I have all. Any opposed? There you go. And first on our resolution. We have a resolution authorizing a budget mod for the Department of Saddle Place for the Eastern, it's a whole industry, right? This is for the players. Is there anything you want to say?
Nothing particular yet. It's for the, you got annual time or any stake, I believe it's actually two year grant, so it's for the, that's courtesy of Patty Ritchie, this is, I'm losing a move by legislator Martino, second by legislator Holt.
Any questions? All those in favor? I have, any opposed? There you go. Carries. Next up, we have resolution increasing authorization of capital project number eighty-seven, the created a fuel management system. First by legislator Holt, second by legislator Twist. Would you like to say anything on that?
Uh, yeah, this is a, we started off with an authorization of thirty thousand dollars to investigate the fuel dispensers in, in all of the facilities except for Parrish and Plaski, which dispensers there are new enough to handle the software. So this will increase it up to an authorization of four hundred thousand. It'll take care of all the construction, all the software, all those and everything, so they will all be, so be away from gas poisoning and something that's really more than stay around for a while.
All those in favor?
Didn't we do something like this in Parrish not too long ago?
Parrish and Plaski, we did a whole fuel system. We brought your tanks and everything. Took from above ground, or from low ground, went above ground with all the tanks and everything. Like you said, all them pumps and dispensers there are fine. So it's just, there will be just card readers and some wire. Other places will be well, but I
I knew we had done something.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor? I have. Any opposed? There you go. Carries. Next item up, resolution authorizing a budget modification for Highway Department, the snow removal expense. Uh, who's the move for this discussion movement? First by legislator Martino, second by legislator Twist. Anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, we, um, this covers a twenty-five percent. Well, I guess to let everybody know, all columns signed our eight thousand per mile agreement, uh, everything is in. Um, so this twenty-five percent that we're sending out in October, this is what that is. The budget is, uh, short that much to take care of. We need to pay them this year, twenty-five percent.
Any other questions? All those in favor? I have. Any opposed? There you go. Carries. Next item up, resolution authorizing budget modification for facilities and technology. Mark, we were looking for discussion. First by legislator Martino, second by legislator Holt.
Um, yeah, as a member of state, uh, we were estimating that a couple of our larger meters in December and last quarter of last year, uh, the estimates were too low, uh, therefore we're running out of water money to pay for, we got water here. Should cover us. Take us through the year. We did have some authorization this year, additional funds to for renewable meters. That's where it did work out right now.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor? I have. Any opposed? There you go. Carries. Okay, next, resolution authorizing budget modification, facilities and technology, temporary, part-time. Please, I'd like to further discussion. First by legislator Twist, second by legislator Holt. John, say it.
Um, we had quite a few employees that were in cost payroll in the past year. Medical issues were our main driving factor that, so we gotta use our temporary, part-time line a lot. Um, and we were able to take money out of regular salaries, so we're no budget means that by just sliding from the regular salaries to the part-time temporary.
Understand it. All those in favor? I have. Any opposed? There you go. Carries. Next item up, resolution establishing capital project number one tenant initiatives for two thousand nineteen for facilities and technology to, this is the discussion. Uh, first by legislator Martino, second by legislator Holt. John?
What do you want to talk about?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Definitely, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Uh, there are numbered one to six. Number one, Windows seven, Windows, uh, Microsoft is gonna stop cleaning out security, um, patches, I think it's January twentieth, early to next year. Um, so therefore it does cause a problem with, um, uh, security updates. One of the things that I'm gonna deal with that a lot is, um, ensuring that we have proper security in our system. So, uh, this is a combination of many machines because they're older machines and also some can be upgraded to your software upgrades. We're still getting in others in all of them. Um, the second, uh, number two is a camera. We have several cameras that are, have issues throughout the county that are redacted on our, uh, view screens and it's for providing a few camera camera repairs is required. Also adding about four additional cameras in some key locations in the county. Um, third is the core switch redundancy right now. Everything comes through central services. Uh, at Public Safety Center through one core switch, all of our communications, all of our dead, we don't have another redundant switch there. There should be one that way if it fails, you can fail over to it and keep our systems up and running at a minimum. Our server upgrades. Um, the software operating systems and licenses that are, uh, many of our servers, uh, need upgrades, either an operating system or additional license to be compliant. That costs us a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, our tape drive, number five, that backfolds the county, we run tape drive, uh, every, every day. It's, it's wearing out, so that we're backed up. So if you ever did end up with one of those ransom wearers that you hear governments have, we, uh, we have, the last day of business as compared to any last time we did an update was six months ago or whatever. So you would only lose potentially one day's worth of stuff if you ended up with a big ransom issue. Um, and then lastly is virtual desktop assessment, county line. They've gotten some of this done at DSS. Virtual desktop assessment is to review within the county, uh, our, our needs in all of the departments to move toward virtual desktops, and that would eliminate the need for continuing buying computers and PCs, um, and having to upgrade the non-continuing space type thing, we go back to servers. Uh, it's called dummy terminal. So, uh, that would be to do that assessment, that costs us forty thousand dollars.
Understand it. Any questions? Let's do the chat.
Core switch redundancy. We replaced a couple of switches. Is there a different switch?
This is, we, what we did early in last year especially, we replaced several switches, core switches in our main buildings at DSS, plug safety, this building. This would be a redundant switch at our head end where everything comes in, which is at Public Safety Center.
How much today, on a day of study, saved us, would you say, approximately? Did they streamline any costs for us? In their, in their report, I mean, in following their report?
In following their report, uh, I don't count a number of what we've actually saved in streamlining. Uh, I work on that, get you some figures. I, to be honest with you, I don't think we've done too much on, on the dollar savings.
The point of the amount of deal study wasn't necessarily streamlined, it was to identify our security risks because of the, we're going to, so the savings would be, would be again with the avoidance of ransomware and some of the things that happened to some of the other counties in New York State in terms of break-ins and exposure there. Um, I'm sure there's been some, but as I recall, the more purpose of that study was, was at our security.
I clearly remember saying that would save us.
Over the long, particularly in avoiding, uh, uh, fractions of our security also.
Any other question for us there, Martino?
John, these camera repair replacements. All cameras within the county will be up and running?
They should be, most.
I mean, because, because I, I know there are a few places where there are camera issues now. Is that what this is directed?
This is directed.
I just wanted to clarify, on the bulk of this, this kind of started last year, correct? Because it's kind of finishing off, uh, with potential security threats that we could have, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But you never know what else we can do identify.
I won't say anymore. You can stop now, though.
Uh, any other questions? All those in favor? I have. Any opposed? There you go. Carries? Yeah. John, that was nine to six. I believe we do have one other thing we need to touch base on. But it's not, it's, it's an issue that was tabled from last month. Two months before. It's, uh, an issue regarding, we had a request from the Borton Historical Society to waive the fee for local killings. They had received a few lots of killings. There was some confusion about this and where it was going. And upon looking into it more, researching a little bit more, we found that this kind of fell us into the same category with some of the other requests that we get for killings, waiving of fees and whatnot. I'll bring it back up, but that's interest not to do that because it would create more and more people, excuse me, more and more people, including a lot of nonprofits coming forward requesting killings. If we can't, if we can't do it for one, we can't do it for basically, we do it for one. Just set that table. Would you like to bring that back? Bring that back. I need, I need a motion to bring that back.
Yeah, motion to bring off the table, second.
Understand that. Motion to bring it up. Legislator Holt, uh, second by legislator Lockwood. And, uh, anybody would, like to, I believe I just covered. Anybody have?
We can't do it if we haven't.
All right, we have to bring it off the table.
We just voted to bring it on. Okay, yeah. But now we're gonna, okay.
You said motion.
I just made the motion. I didn't, motion to take it off the table. All those in favor? I have. Any opposed? Now the motion's back up. So now we're looking for a motion to deny. For motion to deny by legislator Lockwood, second by legislator Twist. All those in favor? I have. Any opposed? There you go. Carries? It's confusing, yeah, we can't. Okay, now I see good reports. Actually, we only have. That's true, yeah. Yeah, we have to, we do it. Okay, we only have one item up, that is OSW dash zero three four dash one nine, rental highway. Uh, we have, this is gonna Kurt speak on this one to get the motion moving. It's going to several well bidders, but I'll have Kurt collaborate on that with the discussion when the motion move for discussion. Hold it. First by legislator Martino, second by legislator Twist. Kurt, would you like to touch base on this?
Yeah, this is our, so probably more for next summer's work. This is our annual rental that we do. It's payers, rollers, little small, uh, ditch rollers, small rubber tires backhoes, you name it, on here. It's, it's, it's low bid. It's bid daily, weekly, and monthly. Uh, the reason we do the daily part of it is, and the weekly part is more basically for the towns. Cause a lot of times when we run it, we run it for months, a week, more so than we did for a day. So, all these bids are set up for towns to go off and everything. See, there's a bug mail on there, but it's, don't chipper and all that, so they can do their stoning oil and that. And, um, yeah, it's a lot of paperwork to send it all off, but in the summertime when we need something, you can make a full call down. Paper, like you keep rolling.
That's the reason for the multiple.
That's the multiple well bidders, and that's why there's so many, each one has two or three pieces of equipment.
I knew you could explain it better.
Well, it's.
Understood. All those in favor? I have. Any opposed? There you go. Carries? Thank you. Next, we have a request from the MO, MSU's, the MSU classroom, and Fulton for distance learning for paramedics program. Okay. We'll get after discussion. First by legislator Holt, second by legislator Lockwood. What would I have to say?
Sure. Uh, this was set up, this distance learning opportunity was set up by my predecessor, John Baratini. Um, this was the first of its kind, um, in a very large geographic area. Right now, if students want to become a paramedic, they need to travel to Herkimer or to Upstate. The Herkimer program is a ten-month program, which is, um, appealing to some people because they're able to get their certification and then be employable sooner than the other program. It's a huge distance. So we set up the distance learning program where they can come to the Fulton office and see some of the didactic material. All their skills are still done at Herkimer. But even through just having about a third of the classes in Fulton, we've saved in the last two years almost seventy thousand dollars for the students who are not traveling to Herkimer for those approximate thirty classes. So, and that's over a hundred hours per student, per class session. So, um, in partnering with them, at the end of this school year, we will have saved students almost a hundred thousand dollars in travel cost. So that's a big factor when somebody is trying to make the decision on whether or not this program is feasible for them. So we had, um, great success so far. We put about twenty-five providers back on the street providing advanced life support in the central New York area. Can't tell you where they're all employed, but overall, the state is really hurting for advanced life support, uh, providers. So this is certainly beneficial for communities.
Thank you. Just, I did have a question. This is a, we did this last year.
We did. So, um, I went back and looked at the agreement. It was only a one-year agreement. So we came back to you again this year because we only did a one-year agreement.
Is there some, this is a no cost to the county. Is there a, a like of which we could also?
Under old law, you can vote for two years without going to four. This is where it's voted by.
We talked.
Interested to go on two years. I mean, I think it's a great program. Do they want?
They, they would like to, um, partner with us as long as we can. Um, they've actually modeled another, um, they've started another Jefferson, a program in Jefferson County as well. They're looking to expand their options for distance learning and they've modeled that after what we've done here. So they're very pleased with how it's going and want to partner with us as long as they can. As long as they have at least five students who are willing to participate in that, they'll run it here. But they have to have five to make it feasible for them because they do have to pay a certified instructor coordinator to be in the classroom with the students.
I was just thinking this might save you the trip to read this.
Appreciate that.
Next year, I think it's okay, but we have to, I'm gonna make a motion. Uh, motion for none by legislator Twist, second by legislator Martino. All those in favor of making it to here? All right. I have. Any opposed? Carries? And we have two in favor.
Appreciate that. Thank you for your support.
All those in favor? I have. Any opposed? There you go. Carries. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. There is another, um, there is four, thirty-five.
Do you want to see the process circle?
Well, we have process, private process circle. Oh. Same, correct? Good catch, that's it. Okay, well, back to, uh, back to the bid reports.
Well, no. No. This, Unidag sent one bid report for multiple committees. This is a process server for DSS.
No. Okay. Understand. Good catch, that's what we didn't need.
Unless Highway is, uh, serving process.
So it's just on there.
Why don't we got a lot of guys, a lot of Americans who can do that? We'll make sure it's on our agenda.
Okay.
Uh, but I may, I'm sure when I sense we're back on bids, Kurt, you want to give this committee a do that, a salt comment? Do we do a better deal on salt?
Yeah, I did that last.
You did?
Yeah. Last one. Yeah, it's five dollars and forty-three cents anymore, or less, less. Yes, yes, that's, that's, that's very well for us. Save.
Our town's as well.
What's that?
It's open up to, keep that open for them. I know they're not.
They're there, but they're always, they're all, they're always on our list.
The cities.
And the cities. And the village.
Okay, uh, last item we have up is a request from the Plaski Police Department. Police Chief Michael Martin has recently, uh, requested, they have a drug collection box and they're looking to have the fees waived or the disposal of that. One notice by legislator Twist, second by legislator Holt. Would you like to say anything on that, John?
Um, I could just touch base something, I guess. Um, I believe, uh, Suigo and Fulton, both cities already have established waivers. Same thing as that, one of the drug collecting boxes, um, and then mercury properly disposed of. Chris, buy it's an arrangement. Yeah.
Very good. All those in favor? I have. Any opposed? There you go. Carries?
Yes, it was. Yeah.
Okay. Doors and apartments on facilities and technology, capital project, okay.
Could be about the last one.
Go ahead, John. Hopefully it is. Um, the complete stamp.
Capel project twenty-four. Roofing windows, basically, we, uh, the past three years, we did seven roofs on county facilities, two on this building, and then, uh, the rest were single pieces of roof in various facilities. They all came out well. Um, they're thirty-year roofs. Uh, the one on this building in Shingle was a fifty-year shingle roof. Um, so we should be in good shape on all of these buildings for quite some time. Um, in Fulton, we did have, um, there's about twelve pieces of communications equipment on the roof that was all removed from the roof. Plus it was kind of put up through the years, one there, one here, and it was all laid out in an appropriate manner that people can get to it a lot easier in this sector. Um, Public Safety Center roof included the skylights, this is something where they committed to the jail and then. So that was part of the roof project as well, was replaced skylights. Uh, the LOB roof, there's quite a bit more, um, private plywood than you were to thought when you were first looking at this roof. So there, we ended up with some issues here on the plywood. Um, but that was all taken care of. Um, so they out, out and well, and then we did the windows in this building as well. Um, capital project seventy-four, high back, all the rooftop units, uh, Public Safety Center were replaced, as well as condition, uh, heating, ventilation units were replaced. Uh, that only leaves up there a couple of, your special air conditioning units that are of ten years old on the Public Safety Center. So those are all set and will be replaced here for quite some time. Uh, those are all R twenty-two refrigerant, and they're illuminated, making their twenty-two and twenty-twenty, so. That was a time to get rid of those when you can as well. Um, then I'll go to the LOB brick and question, if any questions on different projects. Brick repair is complete. Um, entrance enhancements, we've still got some work right here. The portico is closed today. We're waiting on a concrete delivery. Hopefully tomorrow we'll have a truck, um, to finish up the portico. Then there's, there's a couple of issues here that are painting on the cornices. Um, we did have interesting findings here. One was the ceiling in portico. The superstructure had some issues. Uh, the, uh, started to rot away a little bit, deconcealed the ground, so that was replaced, so that was an extra. And outside the treasures office, when we removed the steps and put in the ramp, some of the, uh, hide beam was in really rough shape, so it was good that it was identified and replaced compared to that time. Um, so this project will wind up partially, secondly by Fulton before it's complete. Uh, DMV records. The DMV record center is supposed to have substantial completion today. The DMV part is substantially complete and signed off by the architect. The record center portion is not, and there is a meeting tomorrow at nine thirty with the architect and the owner of, uh, the general contractor, Jim Criselli, to establish how close they are to final completion. Think they're gonna be probably Thursday, so they will have missed their deadline. Uh, but I'm thinking Thursday, they'll be substantially complete. And then also October fourteenth or fifteenth is here completely done, much of the segments as well. So, um, we're a couple days behind. They've held the task on it. We keep going on that. So there's where we are on all the projects.
Any other legislation?
John, I remember going over with you my concern for time and material on that bid. So when they bid this, they looked several times at the scope of the work. And they had the highest line price of anybody for time and material, the contract.
Was there which?
Portico.
Portico, I guess.
Yes. So my question is, I just would love to bid a job with you guys, because you can bid, then just do time and material, no problem. How much does this time and material cost for these findings?
Actually, an LOB brick work, it was just done through a, a change order. Um, because I think, I know your concern was time and material and the length of replacement of, uh, the limestone.
Time and material always concerns me. It's a huge concern.
There, there were zero time materials for these two, on, on the brick as far as the repair. The additional findings, the ceiling was, I believe it's about six thousand dollars.
Was this the ceiling of the portico?
Yes.
Okay, so they didn't look at the ceiling when they bid?
When, no one looked at the ceiling when it was bid because it, it was fine from the ground, it looked fine. When we tore off the roof and got up into where the roof had rotted all the infrastructure of it that was holding the ceiling up is where we had the issue. It was actually packed against two, two bricks, the, uh, superstructure. So you couldn't see it, it was in the brick. So that was done as a, that was done as, I believe, a six thousand dollar change order.
Okay, and the record center question. Is the general paying all the subs? It's been a huge crap.
To our knowledge, they are, but sometimes happens is the subs, some isn't getting paid. We, they do payouts through, uh, tech or tech, the review, the, uh, certified payrolls are reviewed, and then we issue our payment. And it goes to GM Criselli, who had not heard any of the subs having concerns. It's the sub that worked for the subs that we've had issues with.
There were some issues on the, I don't know.
The last, the last concern was, uh, the legal office, and we had a response on that. There may have been an issue between a subcontractor and another. the, the, and, and, and we had, yeah, we had. And they, I understand they were there all weekend and they did quite a bit of work. They'll hope.
Any other questions regarding that project? That, I believe that was every express. Would you have still create a motion to adjourn? First by legislator Twist, second by legislator Holtz. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? There are.